So this meeting of the School Board Nominating Commission of Anarundel County will now come to order. I'd like to first apologize to members of the public and our audience here tonight for the delay in starting our meeting this evening. We were supposed to start at 6:30. We're a little late, and I apologize about that. It is totally the chairman's fault. Logistics, right? With my three children this evening. So didn't invest in UPS and FedEx stock early enough, but nevertheless, everybody's okay, and that's what's important. So I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. So our hearing this evening is solely dedicated to hearing testimony from the public as well as the designated witnesses for our candidates. And for those who are here for the first time this evening and viewing the proceedings on television, part of our process with the School Board Nominating Commission is when we have candidates apply and come before the commission. They go through, and probably many of you have obviously seen that and participated here, they go through opening statements and a question and answer round with the commission. We also afford all of the candidates the ability to have two designated witnesses come before the commission to give testimony of up to two minutes each on behalf of that particular candidate, presumably in support. Then we take testimony from the general public that has decided to attend tonight's hearing on a first-come, first-served basis. And I have noted that there are a number of members of the public that have signed up, and you will be called in that order. And as others, members of the public do come in, I think we have another sign-up sheet there. And as far as the designated witness testimony, the process is going to be as follows. We are just simply going to call out a candidate's name in alphabetical order. It's the most straightforward way to do it. And if you are a designated witness for that particular candidate, you will come forward. We would like you to take a seat at the table. You'll again have two minutes. I'll be monitoring the time. And while those of you have perhaps viewed the proceedings up until this point know that the chairman sometimes has a very liberal gavel, we're going to be more conservative tonight and try to keep us on track. We do have some candidates that have decided to not have designated witnesses. That's totally fine. We've received some inquiries on whether or not that in any way diminishes their candidacy, and of course, it does not. The whole notion of having designated witness testimony is something to afford the candidates. It doesn't really weigh in the balance one way or the other. Of course, hearing great things about candidates is always a good thing. So having said that, just a couple of other administrative items. Those of you who have been attending our hearings know probably what I'm about to say. Two items. Certainly, one bathrooms. We would ask you to use the public restrooms in the hallway to the chairs left, right outside of the hearing room if you need to do that. If you have electronic devices, we'd ask either you turn them off or certainly have them on vibrate so we don't hear them. These proceedings, and I alluded to this earlier, but these proceedings are being viewed live on the Anarundel County Public School television stations. That's on Channel 96 on Comcast and Broadstripe, Channel 36, excuse me, on Verizon. And for those with high-definition packages, Channel 996 on Comcast and 496 on Broadstripe. There's also a live stream that is happening as well on the county's AACPS' website. And for anyone that would like to view the prior hearings, including tonight's proceeding, if it was otherwise not viewed, those will be archived on the commission's website. Finally, we've also discussed at our prior hearing a change somewhat in our format with our notice and meeting time related to our deliberation in public voting session, which was tentatively scheduled for February 12th. We are working perhaps on a couple of new dates. We will make those in February. We'll make those available as soon as we work out those logistics, and we'll post the day and time on the website. That will happen here, and at that particular proceeding, we will not be taking any public testimony. It will be a hearing solely dedicated for the commission's deliberation and our public voting on the candidates. As a reminder, it does take eight votes, affirmative votes of the commission, to have a candidate's name forwarded to the governor for his consideration. So with that, we're just going to, as a commission, take care of a couple of administrative housekeeping items and move to the minutes. Have commissioners had a chance to review the minutes as provided by counsel? And the chair would entertain a motion to approve them?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as typed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So the minutes of the January 27th meeting are approved. We are going to now move directly to our designated witness testimony. We're tabling our old and new business as far as administrative is concerned. So again, just to reiterate, we're going to do our designated witness testimony first by candidate. We've heard from a number of candidates that they will have witnesses before us, others not. So we will do it, again, in alphabetical order. We do know that Mr. Angelus does not have designated witnesses, so we will move to candidate James Appel. It's your choice if you'd like to sit and give your two minutes, or you can use the podium. I think the cameras will get you either way.
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Johnson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of James Appel, who I've known quite a long time. He was quite a rising star in the sailing world at King College class of 1989. So I had my eye on him at a young age, which became more important, as you'll hear in just a minute or so. I understand the value of serving on public boards. I do many myself. I'm vice chair of Anarundel Medical Center, and I've been serving on that board for the past five years. I'm president of the National Sailing Hall of Fame. I'm on the board of St. Mary's College of Maryland and the International Sailing Federation. In a word, I'm busy, and I understand boards, and I know how important this is, and I thank you for your work. Being a nominating committee is a very important task. So my more formal association with James Appel started a little over 20 years ago, and I was part-owner of a company making sailboats, lasers and sunfish. And we were thinking that these boats, which were about 30 years old at the time, we really needed to do something more modern. And we came up with an idea, could we make a sailboat in one hour? And we came up with this process of a rotor-molded boat, and James Appel was in charge of marketing that boat, a new concept. And we shot the lights out, made lots of boats, and ended up selling it. And I thank James for his work. And then I ended up on the fails committee, which oversees the waterfront at the U.S. Naval Academy. And James was one of our sailing coaches. He was a coach at the Naval Academy for seven years and really related to young people, helping these aspiring midshipmen not only with sailing, but helping them with their leadership, and did a great job there. Then I interfaced again with James when I was on the board of the U.S. Sailing Association, which is a national governing body of our sport. And James took on the job for quite a number of years called budget director. Very tough job, the guy that gets to say yes, but the guy that has to say no every now and then. And he included in his portfolio was overseeing the funding for our U.S. Olympic sailing team. So very big job. James is a father. He's got a daughter that is here at Annapolis High School, a freshman, so he understands being a parent. He's been a very innovative guy in small business. He's spent time in marketing. He's worked with education at the Parent Faculty Association, at the St. Andrews United Methodist Day School. Currently, he's CFO of a seafood inspection program. This is a self-funded program with the Department of Commerce. He has been active in the political scene here. And if I were to describe James Appel, I'd come up with a few words here. Reliable. People that deliver are the people that you want to count on, and he always follows through with his commitments. Second, excellence. This is a man that gets the job done with his broad range of experience, and I've seen it firsthand.
Just going to give you 30 seconds.
I'm almost done. He's personable, listens carefully, which I think is a really important attribute when you're on a school board, a board of education. He's innovative, always looking for new ways to do tasks, and most importantly, the core value of James Appel is integrity. This is a man that does what he says he's going to do it, and he does it in a good way. So anyway, I think that's my four minutes. Thank you very much for your time, and good luck with your work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, people are saying, hmm, four minutes. Yes. If you have one designated witness, you had two for two minutes. So if you had one, they can take four minutes. That's only kind of fair. I stopped my, I started the clock late. That's why I had to give you 30 seconds. So I apologize about that. Candidate Bonifas. And for both our designated witnesses as well as our testimony from general public, if you are testifying on behalf of an organization, we need you to state clearly that you are and the name of that organization and the role and/or title with that organization. If it's just your own personal capacity, totally fine, your name, address. And if counsel has any questions for follow-up, Ms. Davis will do that. So, young lady.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Green and the commissioners of the School Board Nominating Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony supporting Jonathan Bonifas as a future member of the Anarundel County Public School Board. My name is Devon Hale Smith, and I have been a school counselor and department chairperson for a total of 14 years in Anarundel County, serving for 12 years at Brooklyn Park Middle and the past two at Crofton Middle. My husband has served as social studies teacher and department chairperson at Southern High School since 2002. We have two children who are in third grade and kindergarten at Crofton Woods, and we have resided in Anarundel County since moving to Maryland in 2001. As you can see, our family is invested in the future of Anarundel County Public Schools as parents, educators, and community members. I come before you this evening in support of our friend and former neighbor, Jonathan Bonifas. Jonathan is a self-starter who is determined to do what is best for this community. We met Jonathan in early 2003, when he and his new wife Becky moved across the street from us, and we've been friends ever since. Our families have spent time together with our kids, grilling and enjoying potluck block parties and going to the community pool. Jonathan has often asked Todd or me opinions on school-related matters in order to get a teacher's and a school counselor's perspective. He is a man of upstanding character and is well-liked in the community. He served as the treasurer of our homeowners association with my husband and became president in 2009. As the president of Crofton Meadows Townhouse Six Homeowners Association, he presides over the board of directors meetings, presents the president's report to homeowners, makes financials decisions, evaluates contracts, signs financial documents. When we met Jonathan, he was the assistant branch manager of the Columbia Bank in Columbia Town Center. His prior banking career includes various leadership positions. When his first daughter was born in 2005, he left his promising banking career of over 10 years to stay home to raise his daughters. In 2012, after his daughters were in school full-time, he decided to turn his photography hobby into a small business. In fact, he has taken my kids' photos for the past several years. We've been extremely pleased with his work and the time that he took to get fantastic photos, and we've also referred other clients to him. When Jonathan sees a need, he sets out to fill the need. For example, Jonathan saw the need for an increased presence of fathers and other male figures at Crofton Meadows Elementary. In August of 2003, he founded the watchdog program at Crofton Meadows and continues to coordinate volunteer days for fathers and other male role models. He's been an active member of the Crofton Meadows PTO since 2010. A few years ago, he began to realize the need for a Crofton High School. The students of Crofton Middle are together for three years. They bond and develop friendships, and then they must split to Arundel and South River.
About 2:45. You're almost finished? Okay.
In October 2012, Jonathan became part of the steering committee to build Crofton High School. He's worked with the committee to develop marketing strategies and graphics for the community awareness program. Recently, he expanded his influence and is serving the community as the chairperson of the Education Committee for the Greater Crofton Chamber of Commerce, and I am now working with him to present the SOAR Student of the Month Award each month at Crofton Middle. Thank you again for your time.
Good evening, Chairman Green and members of the School Board. My name is Judy Wilson. I've been a resident of Crofton for 25 years, and I recently retired after 12 years as the CEO for the Greater Crofton Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to encourage your support and endorsement for Jonathan Bonifas' nomination to the county school board. I've known Jonathan for about a year and a half; however, I've known of him much longer. In 2012, Jonathan was successfully responsible for forming a steering committee to bring a new awareness to the ongoing quest of a Crofton High School. His name became synonymous with the Build Crofton High School movement. Jonathan's passion and commitment is not limited to the high school, but the community in general. He has the unique ability to interact with those of all ages, from his leadership with homeowners association to his ongoing presence as a volunteer at the Crofton Meadows Elementary School. Over the years, as the spokesman for the high school, Jonathan's presentations and testimonies have been consistently well-prepared and informative. He's educated elected officials as well as community and business leaders, providing documentation in areas of facility studies, demographics, and budgets. In the process, a new strong momentum has been created for the high school. Last year, I recognized that it would be a win-win situation for the high school group to join the chamber. We could provide more support and visibility opportunities, and they, in return, could support the chamber. I wasn't disappointed. Very quickly, Jonathan joined our education committee and recently has volunteered to be the new chairperson. Being a member of the school board requires many responsibilities. I think Jonathan can bring many of the skills and talents that he has demonstrated in his quest for the high school to that position. His strong communication skills will serve him and the board well as he reaches out to the community for input and feedback. He's a great decision-maker. I'm confident when it comes to making those hard decisions and casting those controversial votes, he'll have done his research. We who know Jonathan recognize his commitment and passion for the education process. Appointing him to the school board will give others in the county the opportunity to get to know this very special individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn to candidate Alsop.
Good evening. I am Charlesteens Fairley. I'm a resident of Edgewater, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I am pleased to testify on behalf of Jacqueline Alsop, an applicant for the appointment to the Anarundel County Board of Education. Ms. Alsop has requisite qualifications, experience, the character and temperament to be an effective and efficient board of education member. She is a 67-year resident of Anarundel County and a product of Anarundel County Public School System. Currently, she holds a bachelor's of science degree in nursing and a master's of science degree in nursing administration. As a health professional of 30 years, she has served as an Anarundel Community College faculty member. Additionally, she's a life member of Leadership Anarundel. An experienced community leader, Ms. Alsop is a team player, willing to be a supportive, loyal follower, as well as a strong leader. Her community leadership involvement has positioned her to understand the role of the board of education, its procedures, policies, and protocol. She has testified and spoken to the board on numerous occasions. Mrs. Alsop is cognizant and informed regarding the major issues faced by the Anarundel County Public School System. She is a mother and grandmother with children and grandchildren who attended Anarundel County Public Schools. A consensus builder at both the grassroots and executive levels and a problem solver, Ms. Alsop's presence on the board would enhance the board's credibility and accountability to the entire Anarundel County community. She has a vast span of influence in the county. For her commitment and service to Anarundel County, she has received numerous awards and recognitions as evidence of her leadership ability and character. I wish to recommend Jacqueline Alsop without reservations for membership on the Anarundel County Board of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Coats. I am a local pastor and a resident here, pastor for over 21 years, and I like to also speak concerning Ms. Jacqueline Alsop. I want to say that ditto, first of all, to everything that Dr. Fairley said. So to just kind of cover some things, I have personally known of her, because her character has been impeccable. She has definitely been a community-minded person, connecting resources to people and people to resources. I serve on numerous boards and commissions to include the Anarundel County Blue Ribbon Commission under the Department of Dr. Latta. I also chair my second term, chairing the HIV Commission for the Anarundel County. And in each place, we've seen Jackie Alsop very active and very involved. She's a fair person, and she certainly has the children at heart. I know her work with the Leadership Anarundel as well as with the Continental Society. I also own a barbershop in downtown Annapolis, and we give opportunities to youth for apprenticeships to learn about the trade, as well as partnering with the Continental Society to provide books to encourage kids to read. And Jacqueline Alsop has been a very important part of making that connection happen. So again, I speak well of her character as well, and that she definitely possesses a great sense of community, and she definitely understands the importance of having our kids and their future at heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Going to go to candidate Kane.
Chairman Green, Vice Chair Davenport, and members of the nominating commission. My name is Lisa Rodvian, and I'm a secondary teacher in Anarundel County Public Schools. I am testifying this evening in support of Ms. Alice Johnson Kane. I wholeheartedly recommend that you nominate Ms. Kane for Anarundel County School Board. You are unlikely to find a more thoroughly qualified, heavy-hitting candidate than Ms. Kane. First, Ms. Kane began her distinguished career in education in the classroom. As a teacher myself, there is nothing more frustrating than education policy that sounds great on paper but neglects to see the impact of that policy from the point of view of teachers that will be implementing it. Her presence on the board will help ensure that board policies will not only succeed on paper, but also in practice. Also, her work in education policy is impressive. She has worked on education issues through advocacy groups such as the Children's Defense Fund and government entities, including the U.S. Department of Education, as well as the education committees in U.S. Congress. Her knowledge and expertise in the field of education will be invaluable to our board. It is worth noting that Ms. Kane's absence this evening is because she is in Philadelphia attending a national meeting on improving equity in schools and closing the achievement gap. Finally, her current work with Teach Plus, which is an organization that endeavors to empower teacher leaders to implement turnaround programs, is additional knowledge which our county needs to tap. Teach Plus has one of the greatest success rates of any school turnaround program in the country. Her experience working with this organization that has been successful in reaching high-poverty schools will certainly be an asset to our county as we continue to work toward closing the achievement gap. In closing, I urge you to nominate Ms. Kane for our Board of Education, as she has devoted her entire professional career to championing children through education. Please don't pass up and allow her vast knowledge and expertise to go untapped. You are not likely to find another candidate of her caliber. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just an explanatory note, my printer failed on me, so I'm going to have to look at my phone to check my text. I apologize for that logistics. My name is Janet Norman. I'm here to tell you about Alice Kane. As Lisa mentioned, she can't be with us because she's actively working to close the achievement gap at the Philadelphia National Conference in her day job role as vice president of policy for Teach Plus. She represents, that work of hers represents one of the many reasons she could bring tremendous perspective and experience of ideas from across the nation and tested approaches back to discuss with our board and superintendent. As AACPS has grown to an annual $1 billion budget, we need board members who can guide the policies and budget of a system that large and complex. Alice has worked with scores of superintendents and thousands of professional educators at all levels of local, county, state, national government, foundations, businesses, and non-governmental organizations across the country. Let me tell you who I am to speak for her qualifications. I'm an active Annapolis parent of middle and high school students in our cluster. I'm the founder of the Hillsmere Elementary Robotics Club, member of the Hillsmere PTA, the Annapolis Middle PTA, Annapolis High PTA. I received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Maryland PTA last year. I'm a lot like many of the candidates you have before you. They're capable, good intentions, helpful, but we are not who you need on this board. You need someone like Alice Kane to help you. Alice connected me with organizations that are working effectively to close the achievement gap in schools with even higher percentages of free and reduced lunch meals than our Annapolis cluster, which has a very high percentage. They're making great strides, and we could learn from their experiences across the country. Alice's sole focus is on educational improvement. She's knowledgeable, highly collaborative, thoughtful, brings fresh ideas. She followed me as PTA Science Coordinator at Hillsmere Elementary with her two sons, one of whom is going to be in middle school next year and the other with elementary. She is helping our teachers to provide, she's helping to provide the best resources to our teachers and our students to engage in science. She's attended the Annapolis Education Commission meetings to better understand the needs of the Annapolis cluster in action. The AACPS motto is "Elevating All Students, Eliminating All Gaps." I don't see a more qualified board candidate to help you get there than Alice Kane. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you both. Candidate Cardello. Nope, okay. We'll move on to candidate Chandler.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Bowman. I had the pleasure of getting to know Kia Chandler during the two years I was PTO president at Broadneck Elementary School. Kia's dedication to education is outstanding. She is very involved at the elementary and high school level for each of her children. She makes this a priority while maintaining a family law practice. Her involvement extends beyond the PTO board to the community at large. Her leadership and integrity are greatly appreciated. Kia's passion for education and unique ability to view education from a variety of levels would be an asset to the board of education. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Roberts, and I'm here in support of Kia Chandler. Personally, I've been a volunteer for the public school system for 11 years, and I've served as PTO president for three and a half years, one and a half years with Kia Chandler, and that's how I got to know her. There are three characteristics which Kia portrays, which is really why I'm here in support of her. One, she's a team player. She's always willing to chip in and help out. We did a huge fundraiser at our school this year, which raised $42,000 for our PTO, and she was one of our key players with that. The second characteristic is that she has excellent time management skills. Between being a mom of three kids, she has a daughter- She's a wife, an attorney, a member of the CAC, a member of the Ethics Panel for the Board of Ed. She's able to balance it all, also with being a volunteer. She doesn't seem to drop anything when she's doing it all. And the third and most important characteristic that I find in Kia is that she is just a fair and honest person. She is not judgmental. She listens and hears what people have to say, and she genuinely, genuinely cares about making the right decisions for the better of the whole group. I think that this is a really important piece in being on the school board because you're listening to what people need and what people want to see, and she's just an outstanding person. So it's been my honor to work with her, and I think the Board of Ed would be really lucky to have her. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. We'll move to candidate Chase.
I'm an alderman with the City of Annapolis from Ward Two. Don't blame it on me, that's all I can say. I'm also a recently retired career prosecutor here in Anarundel County. My wife, perhaps more importantly, when it comes to matters such as the ones you're dealing with tonight, is recently retired after 37 years at Hillsmere Elementary. She was twice nominated for Teacher of the Year, a countywide honor, perhaps one of the biggest a teacher can get. And believe me, I heard about school and school board issues over the years. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight and to speak to you in behalf of Kevin Chase. He is a friend, he is a neighbor. He has been very active in our community. He would make an excellent member of the Board of Education. He's been active in Germantown Elementary School PTA. He's had two children go through there, one is still there. He has been treasurer and vice president. As treasurer, he helped raise, every year he was treasurer, over $50,000 for the PTA. They provide absolutely phenomenal services to the school, to the children there, particularly in the after-school programs and also for the lunch programs there at the school. He's also a director, the director of Corporate Information Services for Telecommunications Systems, Systems here. That is a NASDAQ company that is headquartered here in Annapolis. It's a position of high responsibility, supervises a budget in excess of $10 million a year, along with the personnel in the, connected with the Information Services Department that they have there. He's been active in the community. He recently graduated from the Leadership Anarundel Program, a program that I'm sure many of you are familiar with. He has engaged in countless, I'll use a school term, extracurricular activities here in our community, all of which are designed to benefit the community in general, but particularly the children. He is a wonderful family man. He is bright, he's knowledgeable, particularly about school issues. He is, well, the City of Annapolis needs a highly qualified and dedicated person like Kevin to represent its, well, somewhat unique needs and interests when it comes to the school system here in Anarundel County, and I highly recommend him. I could not give him a higher recommendation. Thank you for your time and your patience. Believe me, I've been where you are on a regular basis, so thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Eric Edstrom. I'm president of Leadership Anarundel, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Kevin Chase for appointment to the county school board. Kevin is a graduate of Leadership Anarundel, and as many of you may know, Leadership Anarundel has a specific process in which we select candidates for our flagship program. The applicant, you know, application contains biographical information as well as reasons for wanting to participate in the program. We also request information regarding the community involvement, as well as community interest and willingness to do more for the improvement of that community. From my experience, I see three types of people who want to join organizations. The joiners, who build a resume. The participants, who put in some effort and participate but don't really commit. And the doers, the person who rolls up their sleeves and works and is committed to the mission. Kevin is most certainly a doer, and he enjoys the active support of his employer, Telecommunications Systems. Kevin is passionate about his community and the organizations he aligns himself with. From a professional point of view, Kevin values the critical importance of education with a strong background in math and science. He's a product of the University of Maryland, has a BS in aerospace engineering, as well as an MBA from Johns Hopkins. His professional strengths complement his community involvement, where he's able to apply his financial, managerial, organizational, and analytical skills, which I believe are critically important for today's issues challenging our educational system. Being a parent, he's committed to supporting and improving the local educational institutions. Some of his past involvements include serving on the Finance Committee and Board of Directors of the Smithsonian Early Enrichment Center, and he has, he is and has been significantly involved in Germantown Elementary School, where he's been the treasurer of the PTA for several years. His focus has been on the strengthening the community, increasing parental involvement, and raising funds to improve the school's programs. Did I say he was a doer? Ask Kevin how much time he puts into parking cars at Germantown Elementary. He was recognized by the PTA and is a recent, is a recipient of the Maryland PTA Outstanding Volunteer Award for his financial duties and general leadership. Kevin has also been active in working closely with the Germantown, Homewood, and Admiral Heights communities, both from a school as well as a resident perspective. He's a leader of the community, advocate, he was an advocate for keeping the West Street Library at its current location. So how do I know all these things, and why am I here? You already know my role at Leadership Anarundel, but I know Kevin from a different lens also. As past president of the Rotary Club of Annapolis and past president of the County Library Foundation, we, the community, and the Board of Education, need people like Kevin. Intelligent, aware, and involved. I believe he uniquely brings skill sets to the opportunity sorely needed. That his professional skills would be immensely beneficial. His personal dedication and passion for the improvement of our community is real and proven. By his dedication of time and activities, he is a doer and would have the support of his employer. I know, okay. I'll finish with that.
Okay. You can submit it for the record if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to candidate Diamici. We'll then move on to candidate Frank of Crofton. Yes, okay.
My name is Dan Schofield, and I'm here representing the Greater Crofton Council as their president. I've been president for three years now. The Greater Crofton Council is an organization that communicates with like 25 different community organizations and meets monthly. We also have a board of directors, and Dr. Tom Frank has been our education chairman for over a decade. Tom has attended most of the board meetings, the school board meetings over those years. He was a previous candidate for school board in the past, and his degree is in electrical engineering, his PhD. He's done research in that area. He runs his own private business that involves electrical engineering. He's had patents, and I think that his resume has been submitted to you. He attends all of our board meetings, in addition to our monthly meetings, and communicates what the school system is doing as far as the demographics of, the different statistical analysis of demographics for the students and their education progress. He is, he's respected by all the members that, all the people from the different community associations that come to our meetings. They anticipate hearing information from Dr. Frank regarding how the school system is doing based on his analysis of the numbers and things that the school board produces, and he evaluates all that. So he, he's been coming to your meetings for, the school board meetings for like over a decade, and then presenting the information to us. Tom's son and daughter both attended Anarundel County Schools, as well as my son and daughter, and all, all of them are successful in business, and that, you know, I thank the Anarundel County School System for that because, I mean, they were high achievers, they both, they all went through college, some with higher-level degrees, and, you know, it's just, I know that that can happen with the students in Anarundel County. In some categories of demographics, it's, it's not happening as, as often as it should, and Tom's very concerned about that. So I think he would make an excellent addition to the school board with his experience and interest. He's also taught classes over the years in the school system, and I strongly support his, his nomination for the, for the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commission. Thank you for all you do. I'm Tori Jacobson. I'm the Vice President of the Greater Crofton Council. I sit on numerous boards, Lythgoe Moraks in Crofton, some others, the Community Center, Village of Watch Chapel Community Center, which is a beautiful center that the Greater Crofton Council meets at. I appointed Tom Frank over 10 years ago, our education chair. He hasn't let us down. He's brought the superintendent of schools to our meetings. We've had forums on school issues. The Greater Crofton Council has donated a lot of money to the Anarundel County Public Schools in our, in our feeder system, Anarundel High School, South River High School, and all the schools in between. Just recently, $440,000 in the last couple of years, our organization has been able to raise for the, for the school system. Tom's very educated, he's a respected person in our community. We all know him. He's, there's nobody better from Crofton for, for this seat than Tom. He, he's been presenting in front of community associations and around. Like all others, he volunteers. His children went to public school. My children went to public school. He believes in the public school system. He supports it. He comes to the school board meetings. He's very knowledgeable. We ask that you vote for him for, for this seat. We definitely believe that he would be the best candidate for the seat for our area of Crofton Gambler's area, District 33. Thank you, and please support Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to candidate Hirschberger. Yes? No? Okay. All right, moving on. Candidate Hummer.
My name is Elizabeth Isla Light. I'm a 23-year resident of West Anarundel County, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Julie Hummer. I've known Mrs. Hummer for over 10 years, where we served together in different offices in the community and in the schools. I've served in Anarundel County as PTA president in three elementary schools, one middle school, in the Anarundel County Council of PTAs as an officer, at Maryland PTA as an officer, and I'm on a committee of national PTA as well. I've known a lot of leaders in our community, and Julie Hummer is one of the best leaders in our community. Not only does she practice the mission of PTA, she also teaches the mission of PTA. Many of the officers that she, that she has trained within her PTA at Brockbridge Elementary School have gone on to other schools and middle school and high school and started and served as PTA officers there and done excellent jobs. Julie and I also serve as parcel representative at Russet Homeowners Association. I find her to be a clear-minded and fiscally adept community advocate. She has an energetic advocacy on community issues where she's found, she's fought to maintain the quality of life for the betterment of our community and our schools. Her depth of experience is unsurpassed. Over the many years that I've known Mrs. Hummer, she has been a tireless advocate for pre-K education. Perhaps it's, it's her background as a teacher or the fact that she is a parent of five children, but she has the patience and understanding of complex matters that often involve a variety of groups from legislative, legal, community, and business entities that are all involved in making West County better. We credit Julie with helping the, bring the issue of overcrowding at Brockbridge Elementary and the need for the new Monarch Global Village Academy to the forefront of many parents. As an advocate for improving schools, she's demonstrated her leadership, as she's testified and encouraged others to testify at countless Board of Education meetings, county council meetings, local community association meetings, and met with many legislative and community entities to get the word out of what was needed in West County. Her collegial nature and natural leadership qualities are unsurpassed. Through her contact and connections with parents, teachers, and the community, she's forged relationships and connections with a wide variety of individuals in local and state government to educate them about the needs and the part of our community. It's no secret that stakeholders seek her out and ask her advice when they are thinking about public and private partnerships in West County. As a PTA leader, she has worn many hats. She has taken the leadership role in bringing many programs to parents of all ethnic groups in West County. Her ethics and integrity are of the highest order. Throughout her activities in the community and at the schools, she has kept the betterment of the local community at the forefront. She welcomes diverse members of the community to all the schools and to all community events that she sponsors. She works with the goal of empowering all parents to make schools better. Her ongoing commitment to be open and inclusive to everyone in the community is well-known. Her goal to recognize excellence in all individuals and commitment to helping all students achieve is one of Mrs. Hummer's greatest assets. Her energy and expertise on matters involving West County is something sorely needed on the Board of Education. As a parent of five children, we know that her time is valuable, and no one knows better how to prioritize projects than Mrs. Hummer. I ask for your support and to nominate her for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to candidate Jackson. So we have two for two minutes each. Okay.
Unless there are two Jacksons. Good morning, board. My name is Peter Smith. I am the current Vice Chair for the Anarundel County Council, also Board of the Commission, and so I don't envy your position to have to do this. In fact, it's unfortunate we don't have 31 school board members, because I think it would be advantageous for us to elect a lot of these people that are in this room, because they each have a very in-depth resume. And so, you know, I wanted to come here today, not necessarily to speak to Kevin's resume, because I think they all have valuable assets that they, that they have to offer the school system. But I think the biggest piece, as a council member, we work directly with the school board. And Kevin has served on the school board for a number of years. I was here several months ago as he was sort of vying and sort of caught up in this mix of the, the election that had taken place, and I still want to come here and speak of his courage and the background that he's had and the dealings that I've had with him as a school board member. As a school board member, we, as I mentioned earlier, we work directly with them, and so the big end dollars that the school board sort of comes up with every year, Anarundel County gives about $600 million of that. The county council has a direct relationship with the school board and the council members, and I think the biggest asset that any school board member has is the relationships that they have with the council members. Because you all know that, as the commission, the biggest piece is, is how do you improve and move the school system in a good and positive direction? And I can certainly attest- I think one of the things that Kevin helped sort of provides is that perspective from both sides. And I think Kevin cares for all students and I think it's important that we recognize that and I would certainly endorse him being sort of considered for this position and continuing on in his position to be a school board member. And so, thank you. I don't want to take up too much of your time and I wish him well.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Holt, a soon-to-be graduate of Northeast High School's class of 2015. I have aspirations to go to medical school after college in order to become a surgeon. None of my formal education thus far could have been possible without the public school system. I am here this evening for Mr. Kevin Jackson. I first heard of Mr. Jackson's involvement in the Board of Education while I was attending middle school and my reaction was one of pride as well as excitement. Not only because it was someone I knew that was honored with his position, but also because it was someone I trusted and knew to be right for the job. Being a student of the public school system, I have found that the qualities one wants of a surgeon, one also wants in an individual who is appointed over one's education. The top two of these qualities being moral soundness and a steady, knowledgeable hand for whatever matter or operation that needs to be discussed and completed. Kevin Jackson exemplifies these traits. Mr. Jackson and I met, and you could say weekly meet, due to the fact that we both attend the Annapolis Church of Christ. It is through his work for the Midshipman, our attendee sponsor, having been one of his, having been one himself, seeing him be a caring father to his children, getting to know him over the years through conversation and observation, that I know Kevin Jackson to be an upright man. It is with a man such as Mr. Jackson on our Board of Education that all students can truly attain the freedom to, as we were told when we were younger, choose to pursue whatever occupation we dream of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to candidate Jacobs. Candidate Jacobs, okay. Moving on to candidate Johnson.
Hello. My name is Kate Johnson and I was born and raised in Anaronda County. Tricia Johnson now works at NASA Headquarters but was appointed to the Anaronda County Board of Education in 2003. I can honestly say I've never seen someone more passionate and devoted to the institution. She was truly in her element. I personally worked closely with the Board of Ed in Anaronda County, working on programs such as Teen Talk. I can say, being a board member takes much more than anyone could ever understand. It takes hours of at-home work. It takes patience and compassion. Tricia Johnson knows the ropes and understands what it takes to excel on this board. With having five children go through the public school system here, she knows the ins and outs, both from a parent and a board perspective. I'm the youngest of those five children, Tricia's so-called caboose. My mother is selfless and does what is right for this community. Sorry, don't make it emotional. She fought for years to get a new Davidsonville Elementary School, a school all of my siblings attended, knowing that we would never see in that new building. I had to fight today to be the one to get to speak on her behalf. This community has come out to show our support to our family, to tell my mom how much they support her for this position. I can absolutely assure you, Tricia Johnson is the right one for your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, well done, daughter. So we'll move on to candidate Jones. County Councilman, a repeat offender?
Yes, I am a repeat offender. This is probably unusual, but unfortunately, we don't have those 31 seats, but there are multiple seats during this cycle that you guys are selecting individuals for and I think if any of my friends ever ask me to do anything and I value their worth, I'm going to do it regardless of the situation. And so, again, Pete Smith, Vice Chair of the County Council, and I'm here to do that for Shannon as well. You know, when I first got on the County Council, I told the story of, in boot camp, because I was in the Marines for about 17 years, they throw this, and I hate to say this, use this word, grenade out in the middle of the squad bay and they have all these recruits that run and jump on this grenade to sort of throw themselves on it. And the purpose of this drill is to sort of teach individuals about this self-sacrifice. And so you learn very quickly that when you get into political world, people push you on a grenade, they don't jump on it. And what I learned about Shannon is, she's one of those individuals that goes in there and she jumps on the fire, she jumps on the grenade, she's about self-sacrifice for the greater good. She works hard, she's a community member, her kids are involved in the education system here in Anaronda County, so she has a vested interest, just like many other folks who are here vying for the nomination as well. But I've known Shannon for a while and I'm excited to be here because I think it's also good to push fresh blood into the system. We have a number of veterans who are here in this process and so I, you know, when Shannon asked, I encouraged her to do it because it's something, when you give to your community, it's always a good thing. When you elect or you select good people, you have good government. And so I'm all about finding good people who are going to be involved in the process and able to help out and make decisions that are going to benefit everybody in Anaronda County. And so I would be remiss if she had asked me to say something and I not been able to say anything because I do value her friendship and her leadership and I think her resume, just like everyone else's, speaks for itself and so I'm honored to be here to speak for both of them tonight and sorry for the repeat offender status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the Commission. My name is Eileen Gruber. I have been a resident of Anaronda County for over 14 years. I work as a hospice social worker for Seasons Hospice and Palliative Care. I'm here this evening to support Shannon Jones and her application for a seat on the Anaronda County Board of Education. I have known Ms. Jones for over five years in different capacities and I think as a professional, as a community leader and just as a person, Shannon would be a good fit for this responsibility. Ms. Jones and I have served on the Jonathan Landings Homeowners Association Board of Directors for two years. The primary responsibility of the Board is to make sure that our neighborhood stays safe, informed and offers a well-maintained and fair community to everyone to enjoy. Ms. Jones serves as the Homeowners Association Board Treasurer. Her responsibilities include collecting, depositing and tracking the payment of all HOA dues, sending delinquency notices, managing our community service contracts, paying invoices and providing the Board and the community with regular financial reports. As our community budget is limited, Ms. Jones has to, at times, present different options for encountered expenditures. As a Board, we discuss these options to make recommendations and these discussions, Shannon remains informed, fair and tries to act with the best interest of the community in mind. Another responsibility of the Board is to uphold and support the architectural guidelines and HOA bylaws. At times, our neighbors can interpret these laws and, or rules in various ways. We are fortunate to have a community that for the most part adheres to the bylaws and guidelines, but as with any community, disagreements can crop up at many forms, board to neighbor, neighbor to board or neighbor to neighbor. When presented with misinterpretations and disagreement, our Board does its best to act quickly, act fairly and act neighborly. Shannon always plays a part in these tough discussions and negotiations. In fact, she has been chosen in the past as the individual to reach out to the troubled neighbor because of her pleasant demeanor and diplomacy. Shannon is a well-recognized face in our community. She is often seen outside with her children, offering all neighbors a smile and a greeting. She knows many of our neighbors by name. In 2012, she led a small community team in an effort to get a speed bump in place in Jonathan's Landing Way. Shannon and her team worked with the county for several months. When unsuccessful, she persisted with more grassroots approaches to getting neighbors to slow down. It has made a significant difference in our neighborhood as the speeds have reduced on the community's main artery. Shannon is a reliable neighbor. She is happy to help serve the members of her community. She appreciates the differences and diversity in our neighborhood and when faced with an issue, she brings a problem-solving skills, good sense and an understanding of humanity to the table. I'm happy to support Ms. Jones and I enthusiastically recommend her for the county service pursuit.
Thank you. Thank you both. We're going to move on to candidate Klatko. Candidate Leoni.
My name is Melissa Sherwood and I am the Executive Director of Feed a Healthy Mind, a local nonprofit that works within the Anaronda County Public Schools, offering after-school enrichment programs focusing on food insecurity, childhood obesity and type 2 diabetes in our school-aged children. I am here on behalf of my esteemed colleague and friend, Mr. Ray Leoni. I met Ray seven years ago when I was trying to get my programs into local schools. Ray was crucial in connecting me to the right people and helping me to outreach to the community. Our longest-running program has been at Germantown Elementary School for the past six years. Ray connected me with the former principal and the parents of children who are the most at risk and in need of our assistance. Thanks to his support, our program has been an overwhelming success and a model for national programs. In the seven years that I have known Ray, I have found him to be resourceful, patient, compassionate, understanding and forward-thinking. Ray is a great facilitator. If he can't help you directly, he puts you in contact with the people who can. Ray is a bridge builder, a solution finder. He looks at every situation unbiased and objectively and he finds the humor in every situation as he is working on a plan that will make all parties happy. Doesn't matter if it takes him all night, he's going to get it done. Ray is a family man. His family comes first. I think that's why he's so successful. He has two children who have come through the Anaronda County School System, so he understands the concerns and the needs of parents locally and statewide. It's funny, I was thinking on my drive over here and last night when I was putting some words together about what I would say about Ray and one of the things that I realized is, I've never heard him complain about any work that he's worked doing. May get difficult sometimes, but he always goes at it with a happy heart. In my humble opinion, if you're looking for a board member who will be a great advocate for the children and families in our schools, someone who will bridge the gap between families and the Board and being a smiling, positive face for the Board of Education, Ray Leoni is your only choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chairperson, co-chair and Commissioners, my name is Angela Carroll. I am on the Hillsmere PTA, but thanks to Ray. I'm also doing things for the county PTA and also the State PTA Legislative Committee. I first met Ray five years ago, here, there, at a budget breakout meeting, one of those meetings that no one goes to except the Board of Education members and like maybe one or two civilians. And I was number two civilian, Ray was number one civilian and the poor guy was the one stuck next to me. I didn't know anything, I wanted to know more about the capital budget, how does this all work? I'm going to go to the meeting, it was in the paper. He was the poor guy next to me who answered all my questions, who is so knowledgeable and then not only helped me at that moment, but has continued to be very supportive, very helpful. And I think he's just such an amazing communicator. I have been involved with him with Maryland Legislative Nights for PTA. His ability to communicate with parents and let them know how things work and let them know that they can be part of the system and how to do it proactively, positively, not aggressively, I'm just so impressed with him and I would be so excited to have him be up on this Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go on to candidate McLean. Okay. Candidate McLean. No. All right, we're moving on. Candidate Molden. All right. Candidate Pets. Okay. All right.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Komlosi and I'm the Executive Director of Girls on the Run, Washington, DC, an Anaronda County resident and the mom of two boys at Broadneck Elementary. I'm here tonight to strongly encourage you to vote yes to send Carrie Pets' name to Governor Hogan. Throughout the last nine years, I've watched Carrie champion change in her community while leading courageously and taking risks in the face of ambiguity and adversity. Those traits emerged as she listened to her fellow Arnold Elementary families share their concerns and health safety for their children who attend a school in need of renovation. She listened to others and immersed herself in research to understand how to partner with the county to secure a feasibility study. This process highlighted her ability to not only listen to others, but to build relationships across functional areas including Anaronda's County Council, the county schools and community members. Carrie drove hard on the right issues while embracing others' differences. The end result, a feasibility study for Arnold Elementary. She worked tirelessly and didn't stop while encountering questions and having tough conversations along the way. Carrie has established longstanding relationships with local businesses. She believes developing partnerships strengthens a community and builds connectedness. And while Anaronda County is a diverse community that has many different needs, Carrie's willingness to listen and respond to the partners and their needs with care and compassion creates a stronger connection. Doing so opens up the conversation about how we can all make a meaningful contribution to the community. Carrie recognizes her power and responsibility to be intentional in her decision-making, something I've often heard from others in her community when chatting about PTA meetings. Carrie never gave up when it came to fighting for a crosswalk to ensure the safety of Arnold Elementary students. She never backed down, but rather continued to restate her position to ensure that all parties understood her perspective, had data to support the need and the safety concern and knew that she had the responsibility as PTA President to do what was right for her families and the children at Arnold. In this particular case, her intentional decisions resulted in the crosswalk as well as the Capital Newspaper hearing her and featuring her in an article. Carrie is a champion of change and seeks out, initiates, supports and manages needed change. She seeks opportunities for improvement and motivates others to seek and implement productive changes as well. She will be an asset to the Board that will help communicate the county's vision to others so they can more easily understand and support change as needed. Please vote yes to send Carrie Pets' name to Governor Hogan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Green and members of the Commission. My name is Lisa Fletcher Bodie. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Anaronda County and proud product of Anaronda County Schools. I'm a local business owner, a former PTA President and currently serve on the Superintendent's Parent Involvement Advisory Council. I'm here to testify on behalf of and encourage your support of Carrie Pets as a candidate for school board. I've had the pleasure of working with Carrie during our mutual terms as both CAC Presidents and PTA Presidents at Arnold Elementary. As you may know, Carrie has been a dogged advocate for our school's reconstruction. I dare say there are members of the current Board who are impressed by her tenacity but wary of seeing her at this actual microphone. But what the Board did not see is the investment Carrie made researching the county's processes and issues and translating that as education of our school community. Carrie has offered practical and realistic insight for our parents, effectively managing their expectations. When Arnold Elementary was bumped by other schools' construction projects, it was Carrie who was the voice of reason, explaining that in fact, rolling knolls did, truly did have need more priority despite Arnold's building condition. While the reality was not welcome news for our parents, I credit Carrie's willingness to make hard realities understood while assuring our parents that Arnold's time would come. It is her ability to analyze issues and communicate effectively with her audience that I think makes Carrie a standout as a candidate for the Board of Education. I think she is especially considerate of, as she likes to say, meeting people where they are now and bringing them up to speed by ensuring they are communicated with in the most effective and respectful way for them. I think her ability, willingness and commitment to account for others' points of view come from her personal and professional diversity. I can imagine the steep learning curve she experienced as a child, beginning school in an urban, largely minority population school in Queens, New York, then when her parents divorced, transferring to an affluent suburban New Jersey school as one of the only biracial students. As our county's demographics evolve and our population of minority, farm and international students increase, I think Carrie's remember of reference will add an important voice on the Board. Similarly, her broad professional experience gives her the wisdom to consider input for many operating units of our school system: budgets, curriculum, transportation, teachers, staff, facilities and public policy. Given our county's interesting school leadership and funding structure, our Board members must be able to navigate some interesting waters and Carrie has proven an adept skill to do just that. Carrie's experience, commitment to understanding all aspects of issues and passion for educating all of our children and families about our system and decisions makes her the ideal candidate for Anaronda County's Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you both. We're going to move to candidate Pickard.
as she likes to say, "meeting people where they are now and bringing them up to speed by ensuring they are communicated with in the most effective and respectful way for them." I think her ability, willingness, and commitment to account for others' points of view come from her personal and professional diversity. I can imagine the steep learning curve she experienced as a child, beginning school in an urban, largely minority-population school in Queens, New York, then when her parents divorced, transferring to an affluent suburban New Jersey school as one of the only biracial students. As our county's demographics evolve and our population of minority, farm, and international students increase, I think Carrie's remember reference will add an important voice on the board. Similarly, her broad professional experience gives her the wisdom to consider input for many operating units of our school system: budgets, curriculum, transportation, teachers, staff, facilities, and public policy. Given our county's interesting school leadership and funding structure, our board members must be able to navigate some interesting waters, and Carrie has proven an adept skill to do just that. Carrie's experience, commitment to understanding all aspects of issues, and passion for educating all of our children and families about our system and decisions makes her the ideal candidate for Anarundel County's Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you both. We're gonna move to candidate Pickard. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Chairman Green, Vice Chair Davenport, and committee members. My name is Heather Lampke, and I am a 19-year resident of Anarundel County. I would love to tell you that was because I was born and raised here, but that would be a tale. My husband and I made the distinguished move to move to Anarundel County for the schools and for the potential for our children. And we are thrilled to be members of, have two members of the Anarundel County Public School System in our family. I stand here pleased to support Allison Pickard for the seat for District 33. In our lives, we come across people who make us stop and take notice. Allison is one of those people. In the last four years, I've learned so much about Allison. As an educator and as a parent, I have no reservations standing before you in support of Allison. She wants all children to be prepared for college, career, and life. She, I see her as a key agent of change in our community, in our school community, as well as the larger community. Her determination, her integrity, and her thirst for knowledge are beyond compare. She is always well-prepared and organized in her endeavors. Through her work in our community, in our school community at large, she has acquired over $20,000 in school and community grants for our students and for our teachers. She has worked tirelessly with the administration and the teachers at our school to provide essential resources for our students. She wants that for all students. We have a large free and reduced lunch population at our school, and every child has the same opportunities, largely in part to Allison's work. She has opened up the doors of our school in creating an outdoor learning environment where we took down portables and there was an empty parking lot, and she said we should have a garden and the kids should be able to learn outside and grow fruits and vegetables. She is part of the recycling community, or recycling committee, as well as the green project at our school. She has been recognized by Anarundel County as a Volunteer of the Month in December of 2013, and as the Volunteer of the Year for 2014. So I see huge potential for impact at scale. If she can make what's happened in our community happen for the greater good of Anarundel County, she's just gonna be a tremendous asset. So please, I ask of you to nominate Allison. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamie Grant, and I am representing, or speaking on behalf of Allison Pickard. Allison, I am a, I grew up in Anarundel County and I became a teacher at Oakwood Elementary in Glen Burnie, where Allison was our PTA president when I first started. She has unfortunately had to step down, and we definitely miss her. We are a school where we have a, between a 43% and 47% farms rate, so we do not qualify for AAA or Title I money, but we have a, a large population where our kids are farmed. So basically, Ms. Pickard, while $20,000 in grants does not sound like much to some schools, it actually makes a huge difference for our kids. She is definitely committed to our all-kids education. I am in charge of our school's National Honor Society, and she is continually, and welcome, I always welcome, and she sends me ideas for different activities at our school that our kids can work on for our school, to raise money for different organizations and for our community, and to help our school in general. She also is, has set up artists and residents for our, our kids where they, artists came out and they built a mosaic to represent our school two years in a row. She is currently, while she's not PTA president, she is always in the hallways, setting up different types of activities for the kids, and right now she is working on setting up another art project for our STEM classroom, which is our outdoor garden. She ran our beautification day in the fall for, even though she is not a member of the PTA whatsoever, she just took it upon herself to come and run the event for us. I think she is very committed. She has two students that currently attend Oakwood Elementary and one that will soon be there, and I believe that she is very committed to making education a priority and involving the community in any school endeavor. So thank you very much.
Thank you both. We're going to move on to candidate Robichaud.
Good evening Chairman Green and Vice Chair Davenport and other commissioners. My name is Mark Heiss. I'm a retired firefighter from Anarundel County and currently serve as the chairperson for the Anarundel County Human Relations Commission. I'm here to testify on behalf of Cynthia Robichard regarding her possible appointment to the Anarundel County Board of Education. Ms. Robichard has served with me on the County Human Relations Commission for a little over three years. Her devotion for public service is quite apparent. She is eager to accept new responsibilities and assignments. Ms. Robichard has, over time, progressed from a commissioner to chairperson of the Internal Policy Committee, to vice-chair of the commission itself. As internal policy committee chairperson, she has led our efforts to review policies, procedures, and programs necessary to ensure and promote equal rights and opportunities to all Anarundel County residents. She has advised two county administrations on topics such as minority recruitment and promotions, to personnel matters in both the police and fire departments. As vice-chair, she can be counted on to serve, manage, and lead in my absence. Ms. Robichard is a skilled communicator who is able to engage group discussions and thought processes, making sure everyone has equal input and contribution to solving problems. Organized and well-prepared, she makes sure her projects are completed exceptionally well. Ms. Robichard is a concerned and dedicated parent, a mother of a child in our school system. I believe she would ensure the equality in our public school system and be able to adequately and assuredly address the achievement gap. Her efforts in advancing understanding and equality through the Human Relations Commission will help with that mission. In closing, Ms. Robichard's enthusiasm, communication skills, and professional demeanor will be a benefit to the Board of Education in Anarundel County. She has my highest recommendation, and I thank you for having me here tonight to testify on her behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we were short. Anyway. Sir.
Good evening. I'm Tom Slier. I'm here to speak on behalf of Cindy Robichard. I first met her 10 years ago when she moved into the Broadneck area with her family, and she brought her three older sons over to Naval Academy Aquatic Club for them to join, of which I was a head coach. Naval Academy Aquatic Club is an independent organization that rents pool space at the Naval Academy, and requires many, a lot of help, volunteer help from the parents, of which Cindy was ready to step up to. The reason I'm speaking here tonight is she volunteered for two terms on the Board of Directors, and you can imagine what that involved. First of all, it was dealing with parents. It was 250 swimmers. You had parents in a competitive athletic club, 250 parents, raised all sorts of issues, which Cindy was able to defuse, where people didn't walk away angry. But even more importantly, she, she had to keep the board itself focused. The members of the board, in my 10 years with the club, I found many of them resigning frustration because they were on the board to promote their own agendas, as opposed to the overall health of the club. It was a tough job taking on her peers, but she managed to keep the people focused on what the board needed to be, which was the agenda of where we needed to be as a club five and 10 years down the road. And I thought she was one of the better board members that I, I worked with in my 10 years with the club. Also, she's a, personally, I found her to be bright, hardworking, a quick study, very easy to get along with. Her three sons graduated from Broadneck High School, and I'm proud to say all of them swam in college and did very well. She has another son in the public school system right now, and in summary, I think she'd be an excellent addition to the board. Thank you.
Thank you both. We're gonna move on to candidate Roscoe. No. Okay. Move on to candidate Schaefer. Okay. Making some progress here. Okay. Candidate Shat. All right. Candidate Shore. All right. Nope. Okay. Candidate Tasker.
Good evening. I am honored to provide testimony for Mrs. Rose Tasker. I am Cynthia Caldwell. Excuse me. I have known Rose Tasker for over 45 years. We are lifelong residents of Anarundel County and work together in this school system, both as teachers and administrators. When she was principal, I worked very closely with her and grew to respect her talents and skills as a building-level administrator. I do believe that her role as a school principal and the skills that she gained uniquely qualifies her for the board position. In the area of curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Tasker would definitely be an asset to the board. She knows what is needed for all students in Anarundel County to be academically and socially successful. She served as an educational leader who made positive changes in student outcomes by being an effective and collaborative change agent. In addition, she understands assessment. She knows what good assessment looks like in the classroom and knows the requirements at the state and federal levels. She believes in the empowerment of teachers by training them and providing them with the resources they need to ensure success for our students. She knows how to craft a budget based on established needs. She knows how to skillfully implement that budget and make hard choices when resources are limited. We all want our schools to be safe havens. Mrs. Tasker knows how to manage and maintain a safe and healthy school environment for our children, staff, and community. She has integrity, very sound judgment. She sets high expectations for those with whom she works and for herself. She has a solid love for all children in Anarundel County and is passionate about each child's success. She has a vast repertoire of skills. I strongly urge you, for our schools, for our children, to support Mrs. Rose Tasker in becoming a member of our Board of Education. Thank you. And I'm sorry, my allergies are terrible this evening.
Quite all right. Thank you.
Distinguished Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, I am Pace McConkey, Director of the Robert M. Bell Center for Civil Rights in Education at Morgan State University. Our primary mission there is to identify and eliminate any continuing policies or practices in our schools that foster discrimination or that perpetuate segregation in our schools, and the elimination of any barriers to equal educational opportunity for all students regardless of race, ethnicity, background, or socioeconomic status. I speak tonight on behalf of Rose Tasker as an attorney and educator, as a resident of Anarundel County, as a parent of four children who have progressed through our public school system from start to finish, and also as one who has served as a presiding ecclesiastical leader in our church. Working shoulder to shoulder with Rose Tasker for more than 20 years, covering virtually all of Anarundel County, as well as Kent Island, I know her to be a dedicated, impressive, and effective servant leader of the people of our county. I endorse Rose Tasker on four primary grounds. One, her large and comprehensive vision for our county and state driven by her vision for our school system. Two, her deep and abiding belief in education as the gateway to and foundation for economic empowerment, social advancement, and sustained quality of life for all children and their families. Three, her unique ability to engage administrators, faculty, staff, students, parents, families, and the community in a true partnership to ensure educational success. And four, her unparalleled experience as a teacher, trainer, and administrator in our schools, which uniquely qualifies her for leadership and service on the school board. Scripture teaches us that where there is no vision, the people perish, and further, that we are to write the vision and make it plain upon tables that he may run that readeth it. It is a gift to have an enlarged vision for education for our schools and for our children, but it is a great talent beyond measure to be able to articulate that vision with a purpose so that all stakeholders in the community understand it, get it, believe it, latch onto it, and run with it. And throughout Rose Tasker's career, she has consistently demonstrated both that gift and that talent. So in large measure, she has refused to diminish the significant role of public education in the lives of our people and to advance it as an essential tool for us to function and progress as individuals, as families, and as a society. Her stellar experience and qualifications are before you. I close by saying that there is not one county in this state, nor school district in this country, that would not plead to have Rose Tasker serve on its school board, and I ask that you nominate her so that she might be appointed to so serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. We're gonna move on to candidate Thomas. Candidate Toth. Candidate Turnbach.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Stephanie Turnbach, who is applying for the District 33 seat. My name's Julie McCabe. I'm the Director of Resident Service Programs with Homes for America. Homes for America is a nonprofit affordable housing developer right here in Annapolis that provides quality, affordable housing enriched with supportive services for low-to-moder income families and seniors throughout the mid-Atlantic. We have over 5,500 units, of which some are right here in Annapolis. I know Stephanie Turnbach through a company, Rapid Success Tutoring. Rapid Success Tutoring is a company that provides professional tutors for youth in their home to help support and achieve academic success on a one-on-one basis. About five and a half years ago, I was seeking a company that would provide tutors to a large group of students in a community-based setting. These communities consist of low-to-moder income families, predominantly single-family households, minorities, and in many cases, multilingual households, which English is not their native tongue. A polar-opposite business model of what Rapid Success provided at the time. I was hesitant to approach any private tutoring company, but was actually introduced to her through one of her competitors that recommended I Talk with Stephanie. This conversation started over five years ago with one community in This conversation started over five years ago with one community in the Annapolis area. Due to her strong ability to work with others and vision to think outside of her own business model, we are now in our fifth year of operating this homework club and have six other homework clubs operating throughout Maryland and Delaware. The homework club performance levels increase on an annual basis, and most importantly, the students are motivated and excited to participate and improve their academics. Through the years and growth of our continued partnership, I learned that Rapid Success may be a for-profit entity, but at its root has a nonprofit mission. Stephanie has tact, patience, and strong commitment to the education of the children in the community. She has a belief in the public school system, maintains channels of communication, and provides outcomes and performance measures to track such progress. She is academically and fiscally responsible. Stephanie obtains the necessary information to make good decisions and possesses the willingness to listen to others from all socioeconomic backgrounds. In fact, I know she finds this new business model very rewarding and promising for the future. She enjoys giving back to the community, influencing the lives of children, and carrying out an overall essential responsibility to society. She has instilled this in her own children, who annually raise funds to buy winter coats for the youth participating in our homework clubs. A need she saw in the community and without hesitation created a way to resolve the problem. I would assume being on the Board of Education demands time, energy, and the willingness to listen, as well as the many other traits I've just mentioned about Stephanie. I firmly believe and have faith that Stephanie Turnbach would be a great addition to the Anarundel County Board of Education. She already is actively minimizing the performance gap in schools and would be an asset for reviewing and revising school system policies and provide accountability for every step along the way. Thank you for your time and consideration in nominating Stephanie Turnbach as the next member for the Board of Education of Anarundel County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have candidate Ward. Okay. All right. Well, that concludes our designated witness testimony for the evening. We have a roster of members from the public who have signed up to testify. However, what I'd like to do, I don't know if there was another sheet. And yes, we are, for my friends who are speaking in my ear, we are going to be taking a very brief recess, but what I'd like to do prior to that, just to announce, because we had some people come in and come out during the designated witness testimony session, we're going to put this sign-up sheet again on one of the desks over here towards the double doors. If you came in and you were intending on testifying just as a member of the general public, I would request that you fill out this sheet. We will then pick up when we come back from recess with the members on a first-come, first-served basis based upon this sheet, and then we will adjourn after that. So, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will be back with general public testimony. So, this meeting, the School Board Nomination Commission, Anarundel County, now comes back into order. So, as the Chair indicated prior to the brief recess, we're now going to move into our public testimony from the general public. We have a number of individuals signed up for testimony. As I indicated at the beginning of the hearing, it will be recognized in the order that the individuals signed up on the sign-up sheet. You'll be recognized for two minutes. We asked that you come to the podium, and when you come up, please state your name and your address, and obviously where you live. If you are testifying on behalf of an organization, we ask that you identify that organization and your title and/or role. Again, if you're just testifying in a personal capacity, that's not necessary. We just need your name and address for the record. So, with that, we have first Mr. Spear Lancaster.
Good afternoon. Chairman Green, members, board members. As he says, my name is Spear Lancaster. I live at 1188 Bacon Ridge Road, Crownsville, Maryland. I sent the sheet off on your desk, and maybe you picked it up. I hope you did. I have been involved with education virtually all my life. I'm a founding board member of the Chesapeake Science Point Charter School. You might have heard of it. It's their first charter school in Anarundel County. And we were new, and the school law was new, and there were a lot of issues that really caused great grief and problems, and we almost didn't make it a lot of times. But today, we've been in here for ten years. We've got three more schools in Prince George's County. We just had a science fair. Fifteen hundred students showed up. We had over three hundred judges. We're rated number one in grades and performance in Anarundel County and in Prince George's County. And one of the things that we realized early on was the fact that since we were new, the board members, a lot of them thought we were a private school, and they thought maybe we were a voucher school. So, I made it a point to take them all to lunch or breakfast or whatever I could, and they really, really were good and worked very hard in the ten years. And actually, we appreciate it because we wouldn't have been here hadn't it been for their help, and I can say that with no reservations. But tonight, I want to talk about a board member who was very helpful in giving us good advice, and that's Kevin Jackson. He met with us many, many times. In fact, we had a crisis one time, and I called him up, and he was, as usual, busy as heck. He works for a big organization, and the only time he could meet us was seven o'clock on Sunday morning. And I told my guys, if you want to meet Kevin, you got... They said, seven o'clock Sunday morning? I said, yeah. And we did. We met him at seven o'clock Sunday morning. He gave us good advice. He has been experienced, as you know, on the board. He's Naval Academy graduate. He works with a big, big organizations. And Kevin knows how to handle budgets. He knows what management looks like. And I've heard a lot of people talk about potentially what a lot of these candidates could do. With Kevin Jackson, we don't have to guess. We know what Kevin Jackson can do. I know what Kevin Jackson can do, and our parents know what Kevin Jackson can do. If I'd have wanted twenty-five parents tonight and asked them, they would come to testify for Kevin Jackson. I really think that if we don't get Kevin back on that board, it'll be a loss to AACPS, to teachers, to students, and the citizens of Anarundel County to not send his name back to Governor Hogan for consideration for the seat at large. And Kevin has come to our meetings. He's spoken with our students. We have a unique school. It is a charter school. We have over fifty percent of minority. And I'll tell you what, we're closing that achievement gap. It's virtually closed. And people like Kevin, it's been a big help to us, and this is what we continue to do, and we hope Kevin's with us. I want to thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next on the list, and I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. We're so used to typing these days, I know. But I believe the last, is the last name Mitchell?
Ava Tasker Mitchell.
Ava. Ava Tasker Mitchell.
That's correct.
Sounds familiar. Okay. You're recognized.
Yes. I'm going to read from my phone here. My name's Ava Tasker Mitchell. I live in Anarundel County, and my address is 1157 Ramblewood Drive. My name is Ava Tasker Mitchell, and I'd like to take a few minutes to express why Mrs. Tasker would be an asset to the board. First, she is passionate about children and wants the best, what's best for them, no matter what their makeup. She believes that every student can and will learn if they are given the right opportunity. She believes that being a devoted and committed board member, she can help set the course for all students to have a chance to be successful. Her life has been and continues to be an example for all of those around her. Sacrifice is what she does and continues to do for so many. She is a motivator and a collaborator, and like she brought together and improved a school community that was failing, she can do the same for our system. Over the course of her career in education, she has demonstrated a proven record of success and can apply it at a board level and on a system level. She has been recognized by The Washington Post for improving test scores. obtain their GEDs as well as health opportunities and medical support. She was recognized by Anaronda County for improving test scores at her school and will be able to do that at a system level. She received a distinguished educator award by the West County Chamber of Commerce. She has been invited to present about how she changed a school, community, and families at national conferences across the country in order for them to be able to replicate her practice. Finally, she is an exceptional wife, mother, friend, and confidant filled with wisdom and enthusiasm. These are a few reasons why she should be selected, and it is with conviction that I ask the Board of Commissioners to commit to selecting excellence in the form of Mrs. Rose Tasker for our children and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Star Witten? Or Whiten? My apologies.
Although both of us are products of Anaronda County Public Schools and are graduates of the great Wally H. Bates High School, I met Rose Tasker in 1983 when I became coordinator of the Title I program. And she served as a resource teacher assigned to assist the Title I office, which administers the federal program designed to provide resources above and beyond county and state allotments to schools with the greatest percentage of students who live in poverty. We worked as a team as we planned for administrative meetings with school principals, staff development sessions for resource teachers, classroom teachers, and workshops for parents. During this time, she penned the slogan "Title I: Committed, Dedicated." While we worked together, she effectively maintained her role as mom, wife, and earned certification for administration and supervision. Having children in the county, she became familiar with the school system as a parent. She was committed, dedicated. She left the Title I position to pursue her role as a school-level administrator, moving quickly from trainee to principal at Woodside Elementary and then Van Bocklen Elementary, both Title I schools. She was committed, dedicated. During her tenure at Van Bocklen, she was instrumental in hiring superior qualified teachers to improve instruction, providing staff development opportunities to increase competencies and affect school performance. Mrs. Tasker continually met with parents, held conferences, and provided workshops so that parents would develop skills and awareness of the importance of the role they play in their children's education. She retired from Anaronda County Public School System with improved test scores at Van Bocklen. Did I say committed, dedicated? Did she follow the usual path, go home and take a needed break and rest? No. She then worked with the Baltimore School System in the area of program improvement, provided adjunct instructional services to Bowie State University, and participated in a private staff development group. She is committed. She's dedicated. To what is she committed and dedicated? To children. She believes they are our future. To education. She knows that education is the vehicle by which success is achieved. To service. She feels it is her responsibility to give up herself to accomplish the things she deems important. Will Ms. Tasker be an effective school board member? Yes. She listens and is concerned about others. She effectively recognizes problems. She sets priorities and organizes tasks to be completed and is able to make a decision based on available data. She is committed. She is dedicated. I wholeheartedly support her candidacy for the School Board of Anaronda County Public Schools. You should too.
Thank you. Bob Kraft.
My name is Bob Kraft. I live in Crownsville. To begin with, I want to acknowledge that the slate of applicants for the school board position seems to be very strong, and I don't envy you your job. But I want to speak about one individual who I believe stands out even among this impressive group. That person is Kevin Jackson. Based on my observations, he possesses a number of traits and work habits that I believe are critical for an effective board member. Some of these are physical and budgetary awareness. From both his day job and board experience, he understands that these very large sums of money, sums that are nearly incomprehensible to most of us, are not monopoly dollars. They are real, belong to the public, and require careful allocation and strong oversight. He has demonstrated the ability to listen, ask questions, and come to an understanding of unusual problems. And finally, I believe he has the leadership ability, personal resolve, and people skills to work with others to put into place workable solutions to very complex problems. I am the grandparent guardian of a special needs child. For about 18 months, I have been involved with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. In that time, Mr. Jackson has attended nearly all of our meetings and events, other events. He engages and listens carefully to the concerns of attendees and is genuinely interested in what parents and other stakeholders have to say. With this very involved and dedicated approach, he has certainly gained my admiration, and I believe that of others who are routinely involved with CCAC. He works really hard to understand our unique problems. To recap, I believe that Mr. Jackson has already proven to be an outstanding board member. We need to maintain that leverage. Please renominate him and give him the opportunity to continue his service to the county's most important constituency, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I was going to say, "Thank you very much. You did very well."
I tried.
Those two single-syllable names is sometimes difficult to say, so thank you. You did very well. My name is Ralph Wold. I live at 264 Wake Crossway in Ormond, Maryland. And I'd like to say first, thank you for... I appreciate very much the opportunity to be here and to have an opportunity to provide testimony. The reason I am here is I want to testify that Rose Tasker is an excellent candidate for a position on the Board of Education. My wife and I have known Rose and her family for a long time, and we know without any doubt that she has the education, the experience, and many other attributes that qualify her for this position. Please understand that I do not take lightly my testimony on behalf of Rose. My wife and I have four children who are products of the Anaronda County Public School System. As a result of their education, they are each doing very well, with one of our children being an elementary school teacher here in the county. And we now have three grandchildren who are attending elementary school in Anaronda County. And one of the things that my wife and I think is very, very important is for the County Board of Education to maintain for our grandchildren the same high educational standard that our children enjoyed. My wife and I have no doubt that Rose will do whatever she can to ensure that the educational standards are maintained if she's given a seat on the Board of Education. We've seen many occasions when Rose was a leader in her home. She has always shown to be a great mother, and similarly, she now shows how to be a wonderful grandmother. We have seen Rose as a leader at church in several capacities. She's a natural leader, and with her natural ability, we know that she would be a great addition to the school board. The speaker who spoke just a few spots ago talked about her period at Van Bocklen, and I'd also like to comment on that. We feel that Rose has a tremendous capacity to lead, and this was displayed while she was a principal at Van Bocklen, when the school was in trouble. She turned that school around, and she did it with her education, her experience, and perhaps more importantly, her attitude of caring for others coupled with her desire for the children of that school to do better. She took steps to bolster the families of the children at her school by giving them tools to make those families stronger. And as I said, that school was turned around on her watch. In closing, I strongly urge you to give Rose Tasker a seat on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Our future depends on it. And thank you for the time.
Thank you. Bishop Craig Coats? Nope. Anyone want to testify again? Okay. And I also have Elizabeth Isalite. Elizabeth, are you testifying? Did she leave? Okay. Dan Schofeld or Field?
Already testified.
Already testified. Thank you. Angelique? Angela? Carol?
Already testified.
Already testified. We're moving on. Eric Daniels Bay?
I knew this name sounded familiar.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eric Daniels Bay. I live at 1501 Jep Road, Glenburn, Maryland. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Mrs. Rose Tasker. I want to fill in some gaps. Van Bocklen Elementary School, which is in Severn, Freetown Elementary, which is located in Pasadena, Maryland. The children that went to these schools, they were born at a disadvantage. Mrs. Tasker gave hope to them. They were hopeless. She made their dreams and aspirations a reality, when otherwise, it wouldn't have happened. In those areas, they still talk about Mrs. Rose Tasker. If she had not decided to allow herself to be in that position at those two different schools, God knows what would have happened to a lot of those kids. I had the personal pleasure of talking with a lot of parents in both areas. I lived in both areas. I lived in Mees Village. I came up in Mees Village in the '70s, but it was pretty rough. So I'm going to conclude with this. If someone gives you a fish, you only eat for a day. But if someone teaches you to fish, you eat for a lifetime. And this is what she did. She taught those kids from both of those areas to eat for a lifetime. So with that being said, I think she should be on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking public testimony regarding Democratic procedures for the Anaronda School Board Nominee Commission. As you know, I'm a political scientist, interested in democratic reform. Based on extensive observations of the SBNC since 2007, I have six very short process recommendations. I would be happy to elaborate on any of them if you desire. One, the SBNC currently requires a supermajority of at least eight of 11 commissioners to nominate an applicant. It should require only a simple majority of at least six of 11 commissioners. Two, the beginning and end of SBNC commissioner terms is vital public information. This information should be clearly posted on the SBNC website. Three, the SBNC conducts public meetings to conduct administrative business as well as interview and submit final votes on applicants. Both types of meetings should be webcast and given similar advanced public notice. Four, the SBNC is currently using a dual public-private process to evaluate applicants. The public should be provided with the clear statement of what part of the SBNC's process is meaningfully public. For example, the SBNC should clarify publicly that written candidates' testimony and letters submitted on behalf of candidates are effectively being treated as private rather than public communications. Five, the General Assembly statute creating the SBNC left many vital procedural issues unresolved. As a result, the SBNC has solicited from the Office of the Maryland Attorney General and other legal authorities opinions concerning how the SBNC is legally bound to operate. All such opinions, whether put in writing or not, should be posted on the SBNC website. Secret law is abhorrent to democratic governance, especially regarding elections. Six, as you know, the SBNC has a history of discussing administrative rules in public and was called out for that practice by Maryland's Open Meetings Compliance Board. This electoral cycle, despite substantive changes in its procedures and a promise last spring to do otherwise, the SBNC did not conduct a public meeting concerning its procedures. The SBNC should commit to following not only the letter but the spirit of both Maryland's Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act. Finally, I need to retract a former statement I made to this board. For seven years, I have asked you to codify your scattered and often unpublished election procedures and resist the temptation to adjust your rules after candidates have declared themselves. For example, it is a violation of democratic norms for an election commission to adjust its election practices when an incumbent it likes is up for reelection. At a public meeting last spring, you finally committed to holding one or more public meetings prior to the next election cycle to discuss, codify, and publish online your election rules. At that meeting, I profusely praised this announcement of yours. Since the commitment wasn't followed through on, though, I now need to retract my words and correct the record. Thank you for letting me testify.
Thank you. So that concludes, according to our list, testimony from the general public this evening. I see hands going up. So folks that came in late, we can recognize you, but we do need to have you sign in. That's totally fine. How many people do we have? One, two? Okay. Come on up. Counsel can give you the sheet.
I speak here?
That's fine. Yep. Right there. So you're recognized for two minutes.
Huh?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay. There we go.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Richard, and although I'm a retired Anaronda County School Counselor, I still work part-time in the alternative evening programs for the county. Who is Tom Frank? Well, you have met him through the hearings and earlier testimony, but we need to understand what he will bring to the table if nominated. What sets him apart from all the very worthy candidates who are here tonight? Commitment. He has the time, energy, patience, analytical mind, and a ready ear to listen, to really listen to concerns. This is Tom Frank. He is committed to the students and wanting all to succeed. Why is there any kind of dropout rate? As he has stated, the bottom-line measure of a school system is the academic achievement and a successful increase in our graduation rate. He is committed to the parents who want the best for their kids. He is committed to teachers who are dedicated to the students but losing more of their instructional planning time doing clerical tasks, managing emails, preparing reports. He is committed to asking questions and seeking answers and wanting to know why that some schools in this county underperform. He is committed to collecting and reviewing data, able to analyze, synthesize information to help the school board to continually make informed and cost-effective decisions. He is committed to finding solutions. A solution finder and problem solver who will ask the tough questions about student achievement, underperforming schools, and will ask tough follow-up questions. So who is committed to our school system not just being good, but being ratcheted up to... to great? One answer: Tom Frank. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Green, Commissioners. My name is Michael G. Leahy. I am currently the City Attorney for the City of Annapolis, the Vice President of the Board of the 21st Century Foundation, which is the Anaronda County Public School Private Foundation, and a former board member. Let me begin by thanking each of you for your service to this community and for your commitment to the Anaronda County Public School Systems. I know you have a tough job, and I didn't want to go past nine o'clock, so I apologize. But I'm here this evening to tell you a bit about Tom Frank and why I believe he's qualified and suited for serving on our Board of Education. Basically, you've heard some amazing testimony this evening. You've seen the resumes of the candidates and heard their testimony previously, and I think it's safe to say everyone who has applied has a servant's heart, has a vision, has a sense of duty to leadership, has grace, has intelligence. So how do we distinguish who are the best candidates to send forward to the governor? Let me begin. As you've already heard from those who have testified, Dr. Frank has been involved with the educational system here for over 35 years. His children graduated from the system. He's been involved in PTAs, the school improvement teams at Anaronda High School, the CAC. Superintendents have sought his advice over the last few years. And I came to know him when I was a board member, and at that time, he had already been attending board meetings for five years. So I was on the board about 10 years, so 15, 16 years. Tom Frank has been at practically every board meeting. We've heard folks talk about commitment. Certainly, there are board members that are either currently on the board or have been on the board in the past who are imminently qualified. But if you want to talk about commitment to this school system, when you don't have to come, month after month, Tom Frank has come for 15 years. As you've heard, he's an engineer. He's an entrepreneur. He's been very involved in STEM education, long before we called it STEM, long before it was popular. Dr. Frank has a history of tutoring students in his neighborhood and elsewhere, including my son, who, as of yesterday, finished his computer science degree. So we're proud of him. Finally, in looking at all the candidates, they all have special qualities. But it's been my experience that when I was on the board, I relied on people like Tom Frank, one of maybe five to 10, that clearly were committed to the students and teachers and parents in this system, and that had a vision that was a bit different, a bit more diverse than the typical person on the board because of his engineering background and his interest in statistics and in data, which has become all the more important in education over the last decade. He's been able to find particular issues, root them out, and discuss them with the policymakers that are on the board and superintendent and staff of the school systems, and I think made a difference over the last 10 years. So I would request humbly that you consider his nomination and send his name forward to Governor Hogan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I think that concludes our testimony from the general public. I'd like to thank all those members of the public who came tonight to give testimony, whether it be designated or in this particular session of the hearing on general testimony. I'd also like to thank the candidates and others, their supporters, for coming to the hearing this evening. We very much appreciate it. The testimony was great. We have a lot of information, a lot of deliberating to do. We've also received countless, countless letters of support, emails, et cetera, and we're all gonna take that into consideration. So again, thank you and for coming this evening and being a part of our process. So that concludes our official business for this evening. As I mentioned in the chairman's announcements at the beginning of the hearing, we will post on the website notice, sufficient notice, related to our deliberation and voting session, which would be the next meeting of the commission. I did want to take this opportunity, however, and will have this in a bit more detail because we've gotten some inquiries about it, just to be clear on the record. The commission will again be meeting after we conclude the vacancy proceedings later this spring. There are two vacancies, ensuing vacancies, on the Board of Education for districts 30 and 31. So just as we've had the outpouring of, from the public and citizens stepping forward for the current vacancies, there are two ensuing ones, and I want to use this opportunity to make a recruiting announcement for districts 30 and 31, although we do have able board members sitting in those positions. But as this process unfolds, we shall see. So just wanted to make that note. So with that, without objection from any of our commissioners, we stand adjourned till our next meeting. No, thank you.